The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAA 16 and can be found on Channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV, and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening. Welcome to the Exeter Zoning Board of Adjustment meeting for September 20th. With us tonight is the alternate member Martha Pennell, triumphant return for Bob Prior. I'm Chair of the ZBA Kevin Baum, full member Esther Olson Murphy, and a full member Rick Gilbar. One piece of new business before us, we'll jump right to it, and that is the application of 131 Portsmouth Avenue LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2, to permit the expansion of a non-conforming light industry use on the property located at 131 Portsmouth Avenue, located in the C2 Highway Commercial and CT Corporate Technology Park zoning Districts.
Good evening, Mr. Bond, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Justin Passay. I'm a lawyer at DTC Lawyers in Portsmouth. Happy to be with you here tonight. Joined tonight by Patrick Crimmens of Time Bond, who is a professional engineer on the project, as well as Matt Van Zyle, who is a representative of CA Designs, which is the company which hopes to purchase the property we'll be talking about tonight, and then Evan Tormey, who is an owner's rep for 131 Portsmouth Ave. LLC. I thought if it was okay with you, Mr. Chairman, I would just approach and distribute one thing that's not in the packet.
Please do.
Thank you. I was talking and trying to speak loudly into the microphone here. This is the--
Actually, if you want to wait, if you don't talk into the microphone, you don't get picked up on the--
Or you can carry it around.
For our--
Thank you.
All of our viewers at home. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
So very--
Do you need the screen?
Yeah. Okay. Doug, I'll give you one, too.
I want you to sit left down.
Thank you.
So very quickly, we hope to accomplish this variance application tonight in what we think is a pretty straightforward application that is really doing a lot of the cleaning up vis-à-vis the zoning ordinance and the zoning demarcation between the CT District and the C2 District, which is the result of just some old zoning lines. And specifically, I'll just address you, address the document I just put in front of you. You can see, I've oriented you here towards Holland Way in the CT District, and then, which is depicted in pink, and then a portion of Portsmouth Avenue, which is in the C2 zoning district, which is depicted in yellow. You can't see it on this sheet, but I'll direct you to it in another portion of our filing. Our site is the Ozram Silvania site, which was until pretty recently, a large 32-acre site. And as we'll see, there is a zoning line that splits that property right down the middle, essentially. And our estimation is that at some point, the town meeting did that to preserve the development opportunities along Portsmouth Avenue for C2-type development, and to preserve the property towards its rear, next to Holland Way, for CT, or formerly PP-type development, as we'll talk about. But since that time, there have been a few subdivisions, which we'll talk about, which make sort of obsolete and really arbitrary where that zoning line is. And as I'll show you, the zoning line right now is actually through the middle of the building, which is why we're here. So that was just my very brief summary upfront. I'll give you some factual and procedural context real quick. Again, this is the Ozram Silvania site. It was formerly a 32-acre site with two buildings. We have some aerial photographs that we provided in the package, but the big building was 135, is 135,000 square feet. The smaller building is 74,000 square feet. It was used for a light industrial purpose by Ozram Silvania, the production of light components. For years, the property was in the PP zoning district, the Professional Technology Park District, and the front portion of it, as I said, was in the C2 zoning district along Portsmouth Ave. In 2019, something that we'll reference a bit, and which is sort of throughout our narrative, the town meeting decided, in a very significant majority vote, to change the PP zoning district along Holland Way to the CT zoning district, the Corporate Technology Park District. And they do that, they did that for a few important reasons, which we've delineated for you in the narrative, and we've even given the minutes to the underlying planning board meetings, but it was to add commercial uses to that area. It was to open up Holland Way, and specifically, it was to attract light industrial uses. And again, that measure passed overwhelmingly in 2019. In 2020, the first subdivision of Ozram's site occurred. Ozram conducted a minor subdivision, which created two lots. One lot that had 16 and 1/2 acres or so, which was retained by Ozram, that had the big building, 135,000 square feet. And then a second lot, which was about 15 acres inside, which was the site of the 74,000 square foot building. So, Mr. Prior, I can see you're looking at the aerial footage. The larger building is the site that was retained by Ozram. The smaller building is really the building that we're talking about today, and the property we're talking about today. After that subdivision in June of '21, the applicant, 131 Portsmouth Ave., bought the 74,000 square foot building in that 15-acre site. And then recently, and I'll direct you at this point to Exhibit 6, because this really shows us what we're talking about. I'll give everybody a second. Mr. Baum, I don't know if you have, or you can share, yeah, perfect. So Exhibit 6 depicts what's happened recently. At the time that we filed this, back in May, this was depicted as a proposed subdivision. Since that time, actually, last month, this subdivision was approved. And this plan is important for two reasons. First, it shows you the green area, which is the property that we're talking about, which has the existing 74,000 square foot building on it. It shows sort of at the planned south side of that building, the zoning line. You can see where there's a dotted line that says CT District, and then below that, it says C2 District. That space below that line, and all the way to the left over the brown lot, is essentially C2. So that's important, to see exactly where that line is. In 2006, the research that Doug did prior to tonight's hearing, he discovered that there was actually already a special exception from Ozram to allow the small sliver of existing building below the demarcation to be built out into what was the C2 zone. At the time, you could do that by special exception, now you need a variance to do it. So it's important for that, the zoning line, to see how awkwardly it's placed, but it's also important to see that this separate lot along Portsmouth Ave. has now been subdivided. That occurred last month. So that's where we're at now. The lot we're talking about is nine acres in size. Again, it's improved already with this 74,000 square foot existing light industrial building. And that second lot will be preserved for future potential C2-type development. As the board is aware, the property in question is surrounded by commercially improved and commercially industrially zoned property. So turning briefly to the proposal here, the applicants are intending to sell this green lot, this nine-acre lot, to CA Design. CA Design, as we discussed with Doug prior to filing, is a company which produces products for the defense interestee. It's a light industrial use, as that term is defined by the zoning ordinance. And CA Design's idea is to use the existing 74,000 square foot building and build an addition onto it to accomplish ultimately 114,000 square foot building of industrial use. And of course, if we're successful tonight, they'll have to go on their own to the planning board to do a site plan review, application, et cetera. So the issue, as I tried to highlight here, is really, again, depicted on Exhibit 6. This 74,000 square foot building is split by the zoning district. The vast majority of the building is in the CT, where light industrial uses are allowed, but the proposed addition, the 40,000 square foot addition, is technically in the C2 District, where light industrial use is not allowed. Hence the need for a variance from Section 5.1.2. So that's the setup. Happy to answer questions at this point. Certainly, there's a team here to support any questions I can't answer. Beyond that, Mr. Chairman, though, we were going to go into the variance criteria analysis.
Just one question from me, and that's just to orient myself on this plan, Exhibit 6, the ZBA site plan. Building A, is that, that is the existing Ozram? That's the remaining?
Yeah, off to the sort of planned right. That's the existing 100, yeah, the one in white. That's the existing 135,000 square foot Ozram building that is existing and operating today.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Passay, if you don't mind, so the plan in brown is to be retained for further development?
Potential further, no current plans, potential further development.
With obviously the roadway running through it, which has to stay there. Had there been any discussion about having access onto Holland Way, which has a light at the end of Portsmouth Ave., as opposed to having the access through the existing route onto Portsmouth Ave.?
Certainly, I think there has been some discussion in that context. For now, I think the status quo with access from Portsmouth Ave. is what's being proposed, but it'll really be up to CA Design, to the extent that this transaction concludes and goes forward, for them to go to the planning board and discuss those types of issues regarding access. Right. And I can actually report that a DOT permit has been obtained for access onto Holland Way, so I'm sure that will be discussed and vetted through the planning review process.
Is there a plan to have any other requests as far as setbacks are concerned, or parking, or access? I mean, there's nothing that you're aware of.
Well, certainly nothing that I'm aware of at this time, to the extent that the ultimate owner of the property amends the plan. As I understand it, this is the plan, and it doesn't require any additional relief.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? If you would go through the criteria, that'd be great.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the ZBA is aware, the Supreme Court has asked that ZBA has addressed the first two statutes of variance criteria together, and they are whether the variance will be contrary to the public interest, and whether the spirit of the ordinance will be observed. The test here is that variances are only contrary to the public interest and are not observant of the spirit of the ordinance if the proposal unduly in a market degree conflicts with the ordinance such that it violates the ordinance's basic zoning objectives, and of course, mere conflict with those zoning ordinances aren't enough to satisfy the test. The real case law test that the court points us to is whether or not the proposed variance will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, or whether it will threaten the public health, safety, or general welfare. There is no express purpose of Section 5.1.2 of the zoning ordinance, but the implied purpose is similar to that of the zoning ordinance itself, is to promote the public health, safety, and welfare through reasonable development, is to limit development that's incompatible, and that's essentially why you don't want to increase generally a non-conforming use, to enhance incompatibility. But in this case, not only is there not market conflict, there is no conflict with the purpose of the zoning ordinance, because the proposal actually advances the will of the legislative body. It advances the master plan efforts, as I discussed in the narrative. As I talked about at the top here, the town meeting specifically in 2019 took efforts to rezone the PP District to the CT District, to attract more commercial development, to attract light industrial development, and that's, of course, exactly what our project accomplishes. It also preserves for future potential development property along Portsmouth Avenue that is C2 in nature, which is, again, the will of the legislative body. The proposed use is also totally compatible with the existing surrounding uses. It's compatible with the 74,000 square foot building on the property now. It's compatible with the Ozram property, which is right next door, which was, of course, once part of the same property. Also, more jobs, more prosperity, more tax revenue, that is public interest. And then certainly, in the context of the case law tests, there's no threat that this proposal will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, because the character's going to remain exactly the same. It's industrial, light industrial nature, and that's the way it's going to remain. The development will be virtually indiscernible from Holland Way or Portsmouth Ave., and there's no identifiable threat to the public health or safety. So on that basis, and because the proposal is consistent with the implied intent of Section 5.1.2, but also of the zoning ordinance generally, because it's consistent with the 2019 zoning ordinance amendment and master planning, and because it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood or threaten the public health or safety, those first two variance criteria we would submit, Mr. Chairman, are satisfied. The third prong of the variance criteria asks the ZBA to consider whether substantial justice is accomplished by granting the variance. As Peter Lachlan has told us, the test there is whether any, is whether any loss to the individuals outweighed by a gain to the general public by denying the variance. So really, there has to be some gain to the public from denying the application that outweighs the loss to the applicant from its denial. And here, there just is no identifiable public gain from the denial. It's actually the opposite that's true. If the variance is denied, then the intent of the 2019 zoning ordinance change will be frustrated, the master plan will be frustrated, there will be no additional tax revenue or additional drops generated by virtue of the proposal, and all of those things are bad for the public interest. So of course, the project is good for the applicant, but it's one of those cases where it's also good for the public as well. And on that basis, we would suggest that the third prong is satisfied. The fourth prong of the variance criteria requires the ZBA to find that the proposal will not diminish the surrounding property values here. Given the nature of the area, which, again, is either improved or zoned specifically for commercial and/or industrial uses, we don't foresee any detriment to the property values of surrounding properties. If anything, this expansion, which is indiscernible from Holland Way, indiscernible from Portsmouth Avenue, will have the effect of increasing the value of this property, which will in turn have the effect of increasing the value of surrounding properties. So on that basis, we would suggest that the fourth criteria is satisfied. And then finally, everyone's favorite, the fifth and final variance criteria requires the ZBA to find that literal enforcement of the provisions of the zoning ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. The test here is whether doing and owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area. No fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the zoning ordinance in question and its application to the property, and then that the use is reasonable. This test, which comes right from the state statute, really three tests in one. The first question is, are there special conditions of the property here? There definitely are. The existing physical improvements on the property already include a 74,000 square foot light use industrial building. The property is literally bifurcated by the zoning line, as is the building itself. Of course, it's situated right next to the existing Ozram property, which is also light industrial in nature. And then, of course, the remainder of the lot, which was just recently subdivided, is zoned for commercial. So on that basis, we would say that the unique circumstances of the lot are in place, and that portion of the test has been satisfied. The second question here in the hardship context pertains to the relationship between the purpose of the ordinance in question and its application to this property. The question really is whether or not the purpose of the ordinance is being fulfilled by applying it to this property, and in this case, the answer is no. The purpose of the zoning ordinance in question, which is, again, 5.1.2, is to advance the public interest, is to facilitate reasonable development, is to limit incompatible development. And here, applying that ordinance to this property doesn't accomplish those purposes. On the contrary, this is the case where granting the variance accomplishes those purposes, because granting the variance advances the public interest, it accomplishes reasonable development, and it was also accomplishing the express intent of the zoning amendment in the legislative body from 2019. It's also promoting totally compatible development by virtue of its surroundings. So this is really the rare case where granting the variance advances the purpose of the zoning ordinance when applying it strictly actually does not. And then the last question is whether or not the proposed use is reasonable. We would suggest that it is here, just by virtue of the uses that have been happening on that property for years and years and years, and by virtue of the town meeting's intent to facilitate this precise type of use on this precise property. So that's the summary. Again, happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant, for any of the, for team?
Go ahead, I've got one.
Oh, go ahead, Rick.
Okay. So what's not clear to me is specifically what you're asking the variance to say.
Same question I was going to ask. There we go.
So are you asking for all of the green to end up being CT? Is that, is that the request, or do you want to just make sure you can build the building, or what?
Yeah, the request is fashioned as a request to permit the expansion of a non-conforming use with the 40,000 square foot addition to the existing building. So that's, we're not asking to rezone the property. Typically, the relief requested has to be fairly narrow, and that's, that's the relief that is the subject of our application.
So the relief is, as I understand it, and as I would, you know, as I take this application as solely to allow, just, just to permit this expansion and this addition as proposed?
Okay.
Nothing more on this lot, and any additional, any further addition that would come in the future would require another variance request.
Okay. So, and, and so basically, it's to build the new part, you're assuming that you keep the part that's already there and in the other, in the wrong zone?
So the, if we're looking at Exhibit 6, Mr. Gilbar--
I don't want you to have to come back in a year and a half and say, gee, we need another little bit in order to build this thing.
No, I appreciate that, and I think that the nature of the proposal was broad and designed to encompass what we're, what we're anticipating with the building. That's why we've been collaborating with CA Design. Matt's here tonight to talk to that. But I think what we've proposed is consistent and would capture everything that we're hoping to do. But just to Doug's point at the beginning of this, I mean, the existing building, which if we're looking at this Exhibit 6, is the portion towards the top of the plan, even that little sliver that's within the C2 zoning district, that was already approved by the ZBA back in 2006. So that, even that portion is totally legal as it exists today. It's just that square, that 40,000 square foot square, which is developed through collaboration with the prospective buyer, which is the subject of this application.
Okay. So a variance, it says, grant you a change, permission to build in accordance with CT in an additional 40--
Thousand square feet.
That would make you happy?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
And there's no proposed change in the zoning in the portion of the property that remains in brown, because that's, okay. Silly question, 131 Portsmouth Avenue is the dress, is the address only for the green?
So 131 Portsmouth Ave. was, is the address for what was formerly the whole property, the 15 acres. So I don't think post-subdivision approval, Patrick will correct me if I'm wrong, there has been a new address assigned to--
I just want to refer to it properly in any potential motion.
That lot has, if I may interject, that lot has not been numbered yet. The, the whole parcel is, both parcels are considered 131. As the E911 committee chair, I can assure you, we are working on that--
I think 1A and 1B.
Right now, it's, yeah, 1--
If we, if a motion were to refer to 131 Portsmouth Avenue, we could be inadvertently also rezoning the existing Ozram building.
Well, we wouldn't need to, because that's already--
Yeah, that's already subdivided.
It's already subdivided.
And it's already subdivided, and it's already CT, and the brown is already CT as well?
The brown is C2, that's what's along--
The brown is C2.
The brown, that's what's along Portsmouth Ave.
Which you're not proposing to change at this time.
Correct.
So I think if it, if it helps to clarify, we're talking, what we would be, we approve, we would be, if we so choose to approve, we would be approving a expansion of a non-conforming use to permit the proposed 40,000 square foot building addition on Lot 1--
Yeah, exactly, Map 51, Lot 112A. So we would refer to exactly what's on--
As presented. I think if you say as presented, that really captures everything we talked about tonight.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. I am going to read, we do have a memo which everyone should have received in the packet, I think it was submitted in, in June, from the Economic Development Director in Support. A couple bullets, that light industrial use is one of the several uses consistent with the department's vision for Holland Way and that part of town, that the adjacent Ozram building and vacant former Ozram building are light industrial, and that the opportunity to expand the currently vacant building with consistent light industrial use could bring up to 200 jobs to the town. So just make sure that's part of the record, and then I will open it up to anyone in the public. Seeing none, I'm going to close it to the public, and we'll go into deliberative.
Mr. Chairman, I think a quick reading of the room would be that the group is in, generally in favor of granting the variance. The only questions had to do with what is the best way to phrase it, which I would consider to be fairly positive as far as. An indication of support for this is concerned, I certainly would be in favor of supporting it. I wrote "okay" next to all five of the variance criteria. No questions or issues, nor did any other member of the board on the question of the variance criteria.
Anyone else?
I have no concerns.
The only possible concern is a future exit to Holland Way, which I think would be very, I think would be needed, but that doesn't have anything to do with what we're saying.
Right. And they will go through site plan review where that, that may come up?
I mean, that doesn't have anything to do with--
Yeah.
Two of us have, have expressed our preference for that already, so I think--
I mean, you've--
Two of us have expressed our preference for that already, so I think they.
Especially if you.
They can read the room, too.
200 jobs.
Right.
All I can see is cars, cars, cars.
Right.
And a bottleneck if you ever had a fire in there, and getting equipment in and people out and so forth. But that doesn't have anything to do with this at the moment.
I'm loath to make a motion, only because I want to make sure that I phrase it correctly.
Okay. Anyone else wish to make a motion?
You ready to go, Bob?
Well, let's give it a stab, and we'll see. I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the application of 131 Portsmouth Avenue LLC for a variance from Article 5, Section 5.1.2, to permit the expansion of a non-conforming light industrial use on the property located at 131 Portsmouth Avenue, also known as Map 51, Lot 112A, as proposed.
Second?
I second.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? I actually thought that was well done.
Very well done.
Yeah, I think you covered the concerns.
Didn't do anything, I read.
I know, but you had to read from two different pieces of paper. That gets complicated.
Couldn't have done it.
My brain surgery wasn't that bad.
Given that there's.
Don't give me credit for that.
I'm gonna entertain a vote on the motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Have a great night.
Good to see you, Mr. Pryor.
Thank you.
And welcome to Exeter.
Thank you.
Next order of business is a request for rehearing, the August 16 zoning board decision on 81 High Street. This was the Phillips Exeter Academy application to remove the, basically to permit the property be used for multifamily without the over 55 restriction. Should have all received a copy of their request for rehearing. As you, as I'm sure everyone knows, the question is whether we believe that the decision was either there was error made, or new facts, or facts that weren't known and weren't able to be known at the time. So I hope everyone had a chance to review the request. I'd like to open it up for, and though there's no members of the public, this is a, this is purely deliberative, this is not open for public discussion, but I'd like to open it up for discussion. I wasn't at this meeting, I've reviewed the minutes, and I'm prepared to vote on the motion, but I'd like to hear from members that were here.
We, when the original variance was issued, there was a very serious problem on the site. We had a very old building that was falling down. We had a historic structure that we wanted to retain, and through a lot of discussion, we arrived in a situation whereby having an age-restricted use, we could have very little impact on the surrounding territory and a successful upgrading of the structure. That upgrade has happened, the facility has been run successfully for a number of years, and the hardship no longer exists. It's not that we are, it's not that we are trying to undo the hardship. Basically, what they've said to us is, since the variance allowed multifamily housing in this facility, any condition on that use is not enforceable. And I don't think that that's true, but that's, if you read what they said, they don't use those words, but that's the essence of it. So there is no hardship. The facility is run successfully now. The fact that the owner, the current owner feels that he has to raise his prices in order to continue to run may be a hardship for the people who live there, but it's not a hardship for the property. So I think our finding was absolutely correct.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I don't think they've given us anything additional to work with either. Purely, this is why we don't agree.
Restating the argument. Yeah, I mean, I will note that, you know, he, there is a suggestion that, that, you know, that the board found that unnecessary hardship existed in 2001, so therefore it continues to exist, but I don't follow that logic. You know, whether, not a question of whether I, you know, agree with the decision being made, but whether there was an error, and I don't think considering the over 55 restriction. I mean, that was, when the board made its decision in 2011, I reread the minutes, it was clear that the, it was being considered as an over, with the over 55 restriction.
That's what they asked for.
What they asked for.
The case was presented to us at the time.
Yeah. And it was part of the consideration in making the review. You know, it was consistent with the, somewhat consistent with the long-time use, that it had been a, you know, a home. And so, yeah, I tend to agree, from my read, it wasn't that there was clear error, it was that, you know, they disagree with the finding, that the hardship didn't exist. So.
Well, I read the minutes. Now, I may have misinterpreted it, but I got the impression, although it wasn't stated, that the house back then couldn't sell, and there was no market for a family, family house. There was reference to several realtors in the minutes. I got the impression that this was the, you know, only way to go, and.
It's a 12,000 square foot building, that's not going to be a single-family home.
Then.
We had, yeah.
It had been originally a single-family, but then, much even tied with that large expansion.
My concern is now, and I'm not sure that that is true. I mean, in other words, if you put that on the market as a single-family home, I.
Whether, well, yeah, it may sell. And, I mean, and I also disagree, his, the statement in the motion is that requiring the property to be used in conformance with the allowed uses would require, you know, a single-family home would be unreasonable or wouldn't work, but I don't think that is necessarily the consideration. It is, it is.
That's not an error that was made by this board in their decision in August.
Right.
There, and I was not at the meeting either. I have read the motion as well as the minutes, and I find that I'm ready to make a, make a vote on this as well.
Great.
And was part of the applicant's letter to us, was his argument that we should be not considering the variance, but can go back and look at the property without the variance? In other words, the variance doesn't come.
It sounds like that's what he's like, you should be looking at this property as a piece of property, ignoring the previous variance, but even I think if we looked at it that way, everybody would have come to the same decision, because it's not a dilapidated building that needs work. It's a very nice building now that if he wants to sell it as a 14-unit building, he could probably sell it as a 14-unit building.
I think he could probably sell it as a family. I mean, considering what's being bought at the prices.
Yeah.
It's within walking distance of Exeter.
Lot of garages.
Pardon, sounds fantastic.
That could be good. Yeah.
But that's immaterial.
It is. Okay. Well, that's, thank you all. Any further discussion?
Do we have to vote?
We do. So likewise, I would entertain a motion on whether or not to, to grant the rehearing request or deny the rehearing request.
I move to deny the request to reconsider.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Okay. Well, it was an easy meeting. We're not quite done, minutes.
Okay.
That was a quick one.
Yeah, it's unlike us.
Good job.
Yeah, thanks, Doug.
Thanks, Doug.
Yeah, you don't want us to go around for the minutes?
We might have a lot of comments in these minutes, they're gonna quote you in these minutes.
Have a good night, Doug.
I'm good.
Good night, Doug.
It's a pleasure to see Mr. Pryor back.
Thank you. I wouldn't gone that long.
It felt like years.
Yeah.
You're that, you're that love.
Please.
And I must say, he has to do a great job.
As my brother in Georgia says, that dog won't hunt.
Thank you. Nice seeing you, Mark.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you all.
Good night.
So I should ask, actually, before we.
We only have three.
We only have three members that were here, we can, we don't, I mean, the other members can vote on the minutes, I'm not really comfortable since I wasn't there.
Nor am I.
But three is enough.
I think it's enough, I actually read them, because it was relevant to the discussion we just had, and the minutes are great.
Okay. The only question I had, or not question, but there were some references, the only thing that I noticed was there's some references to, like, Attorney Wilson, and I think that Steve Wilson, who is not the attorney, he's the property owner, and Attorney Tillsley. So I don't know whether, in those instances, it was intended to be.
Attorney or Wilson.
Attorney or, exactly. I don't know if it was Wilson speaking or Roy Tillsley speaking. I don't know if others would be able to flag that and change it.
What line?
That was the only comment I had.
Now you gotta find it.
I know, I know. I noticed.
Well, while you look, I have some questions.
Okay.
Well, it was.
Line 213 is one, sorry, Martha, I didn't do.
Confusing as to whom the attorney was representing, and usually that's not the academy standard attorney. And so I was very confused whether he was, whom he was representing.
He has.
I thought he was representing the academy.
Yes.
I think he was, and I think he, he has in the past, in the last application as well.
I think he has for the other property on High Street. Now, where am I?
Esther, do you wanna?
I'm finding some, but I'll just.
It's like a word find.
Mm-hmm.
So at the beginning, I stated those two applications were being rescheduled, but then that within the minutes it has application for 131 Portsmouth Ave was not heard. Do we usually do that?
No.
Okay. I guess, do we want to do that?
Well, it didn't hurt.
Doesn't hurt, I just, it was something different, and I don't like change, so I wasn't sure if we wanted to do it or not. I pick up on change pretty quick. That, and I thought more than one person spoke from the public before we let the gentleman in who was locked out.
Yeah.
I thought there was more than one speaker, but in here, it only had one person speaking in public, and I didn't have time to pull out to see if we had more than one public comment. So maybe we shouldn't have voted on these tonight, because I should probably pull out my notes.
Do you think?
These notes are so spectacular, I can't imagine she missed one either.
They usually are very spot on.
It might have just been a long night, too.
Yeah, I mean, if you have questions, then we could wait. I would like to approve these tonight, if only because we've got a pending motion for rehearing, and they, you know, they may be relevant to any appeal.
Joanna is good enough, I don't think she would miss a public comment person. I think I was just.
I would be very surprised if she missed someone. I found the references, it's on, I don't see the page number, but line 177 is the first one, it says, Attorney Wilson said there's a legal allowance to have 55-plus in the community without age discrimination, but to take a different number would likely run afoul of the law.
I think that was actually the attorney.
That would be Attorney Tillsley, I'm sure. I don't think Steve Wilson would get into that.
Attorney Wilson said that if that happened, it goes back to over 55-plus, that's line 185 to 186.
Yep, that's the attorney.
Okay. And then 191, Attorney Wilson said the faculty are already in rental housing.
That wasn't Mr. Wilson.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense as well, since he would be representing, he would be speaking, Attorney Tillsley would be speaking on behalf of the academy.
It was either the attorney or the representative from the academy said that.
Well, the next, it's Mr. Layden, who's the representative.
Okay.
Those the only three instances?
Those were the only three that I found. So.
I think they're resolved.
Any other comments?
No. Let me just glance again, I did read them, I thought, I thought they were all right,
And then I will ask that one of the three of you that were here make the motion, and I can mark, I would just make it with these, to change. It's on line 177, 185, and 191.
So you're assigned to make the motion.
Oh, yay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes with updating line 177 to be Attorney.
Tillsley.
Tillsley. Line 185 to be Attorney Tillsley, as well as line 191, update Attorney Wilson to Attorney Tillsley.
I second.
Okay.
The messiest motion ever, but motion done.
It was not the messiest motion ever. Are you ready to vote? Are you?
Yes.
You're, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain.
As well.
Okay.
They won't be able to blame them.
Again, I want to, just want to say, Kevin already knows this, I can't hear the, I can't be here for the Riverwoods, because I live at Riverwoods, which is next.
Next month.
Next month.
Or is it gonna be on next month?
Yeah, that's the plan.
And I am in a butter, so I will have to recuse myself as well on the Riverwoods motion.
Oh, this is exciting.
It's gonna get real exciting, real quick.
That's too, okay, well.
So next month, you need everybody around.
We'll need as many, so.
Everybody on deck.
Yes.
I would be available in October for any additional applications, but I can't.
But not that one. Okay.
So what's the, the date's gonna be?
Why are they considering you as in the butter?
I consider myself in the butter of Riverwoods, because I'm across the street from the entrance.
So it's the same date?
I'm gonna.
But this basically.
Go ahead. We are still in the meeting, so.
I know.
Oh, you mean we. We have not adjourned.
I think it's.
I'm gonna err on the side of caution and say.
Well, I think it's, and I agree with you, but.
Sorry, if we need more discussion, I'm happy to, but I'm gonna adjourn the meeting. We haven't yet.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, let's go.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune in to our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune in to our other content as well.